The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. We have a couple people that have signed up. First, recognize Dave Power. And I'll remind everyone that we do allow two minutes and we do not respond.
Members of the council, I am Dave Power, President of Perkins. My son, who is deaf-blind, attended Perkins. I'm not here to debate the town's legal right to penalize Perkins for its late filing. It's just not right. It's not right that Watertown apply this extreme penalty, possibly for the first time ever, and undoubtedly the largest in the town's history at $1.4 million, to, of all places, Perkins School for the Blind. In the world of services to the blind, this is a massive amount of money, and we're told that other towns in Massachusetts are more forgiving. And it's not right that the assessor demand a pilot agreement from Perkins before he will consider lifting this disproportionate penalty. It's also not right to suggest that Perkins is somehow an outlier among charitable organizations in Watertown. Out of 200 tax-exempt organizations, there are only six pilot agreements and none with charitable organizations. In fact, most of Watertown's pilot revenues come from Tufts Health Plan, a $5 billion tax-exempt organization, with $130 million in profits. Tufts bought a commercial property and generously agreed to continue paying a portion of the building's property taxes through a pilot agreement. It's not right to ignore the many contributions of Perkins to Watertown. We do pay $140,000 in property taxes already. We spend hundreds of thousands in annual subsidies to Watertown students, for Watertown students attending Perkins, and numerous contributions to the community which Kim Charleston's covered the last time. So I urge the council and the administration to work together to do the right thing and overturn this unfortunate penalty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Kane?
Good evening. During every meeting of the town council, there's an opportunity for individual councilors to make announcements that are often specific to their district or specific to their personal interests as a counselor. Unfortunately, if a person misses a meeting of the council, that person would never hear these announcements. So I'm asking the council to arrange for these announcements to be printed somewhere on the council's or the town's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else like to be heard in public forum that hasn't signed up? Seeing none, I close the public forum. Oh, Mr. Page, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I spoke to the council president earlier, and I just would very briefly speak to, just in a full disclosure, I think it's important that the folks here and at home hear just kind of a follow-up to Mr. Power from Perkins making a statement several times about it's not right. I think it's important because the room was filled two weeks ago tonight, and I think it'd be important to kind of provide a little bit of an update. That update is as follows, that Mr. Smith, the chairman of the Board of Assessors, along with special counsel, met with Mr. Power and Perkins Legal Counsel last Tuesday. On Friday, Mr. Power wrote by email to Mr. Smith and informed him that Perkins was not interested in responding to the town's pilot proposal, and Mr. Power forwarded a copy of that email to all town councilors. Mr. Smith responded by email to Mr. Power this afternoon, indicating that the town continues to believe that further discussion between the parties is absolutely necessary to better understand each side's respective views concerning the municipal services the town provides to Perkins, the fairness to taxpayers, and other exempt organizations, and the benefits that Perkins provides to Watertown. Mr. Smith requested additional information from Perkins and reiterated that the town remain willing to participate in a full and open discussion with Perkins regarding the appropriateness of a pilot. A copy of Mr. Smith's email to Mr. Power that went out this afternoon was forwarded to town councilors this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item is examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of January 14?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of January 14th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is President's Report, and I do not have anything this evening. We have other things on the agenda. Public hearings. Number eight is a public hearing and vote on a proposed zoning map amendment by removing the parcels of land located at 70, 78, 84 to 86, and 88 Galen Street from the limited business district and into the I-2, industrial 2 zoning district in keeping with the abutting properties. And I'm first going to recognize Steve McGoon, Director of Community Development and Planning and Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, town manager, and members of the public. What is before you tonight is a request to rezone four parcels, as the council president mentioned, from the LB zoning district to the I-2 zoning district. What I'll do for you this evening is summarize the planning board's report to the council regarding this request, and also certainly be available to answer any questions that the council may have at the appropriate time. The property owner is requesting that 70, 78, 84 to 86, and 88 Galen Street be rezoned, again, from the limited business district to the I-2 zoning district. This would create a consistent zoning district across the bounds of the property. Right now, those enumerated parcels are, in effect, smaller parcels along Galen Street, which reflect a more commercial or retail use, historic use along Galen Street, while the remainder of the property, balance of the property reflects that more industrial history and industrial past. The larger parcel being zoned for that industrial use. Over the years, the manufacturing use that was associated with the industrial 2 district has mostly gone away, or to some extent, the industrially zoning district has evolved and allows for a broader range of uses, does allow for some of those commercial uses, and is not as heavy industry-oriented as it once may have been. The applicants indicated their interest in redeveloping the entire parcel or collection of parcels with a more of an office-lab, small-scale manufacturing within these, within multiple buildings on the property, which they could do with the existing zoning pattern. By zoning the entire property into one zoning district, it allows that development to take place in a more coordinated fashion and a much better design. I'd like to touch on a couple of the long-range planning documents that the town has, a strategic framework for economic development, which was looking at economic development opportunities across town. And in that plan, we identified six focus areas, areas that were either undeveloped or underdeveloped, and were opportunities that we recognized for economic development to happen in town. This property in this area is one of those half dozen identified opportunity areas. Within the planning document, we even did some conceptual drawings of what this area could potentially look like with the realignment of street patterns and new and more dense development to take place. That South Square area is identified in economic development, strategic framework for economic development, you know, would be able to be realized with the change to the zoning map within this block, again, as outlined in that plan, and would make consistent rules for all the buildings and all the uses within that larger parcel being under one zone. Similarly, the 2015 comprehensive plan showed this area in the future land use map as office-industrial mixed use, again, consistent with the proposed use that this property owner has outlined for future development of the property. You know, the proximity to both the Charles River and the MBTA bus yard provide an opportunity for significant transit-oriented development to take place, something that would be, you know, have an opportunity to be mutually beneficial for both reimagining how access to Galen Street occurs, how it interacts with that transit hub, and allows for the potential for some significant improvements to take place in that area. Associated with that, again, in the strategic framework, we did talk about the potential for realigning Water Street to align with Aldrich Road. That is something that I think provides an opportunity to create a better road network in that area and improve traffic operations on Galen Street. So again, you know, this proposed rezoning and redevelopment of this combined parcel provides an opportunity to accomplish that. Staff supported the recommendation to rezone the properties to the consistent I-2 zoning district across the property. The planning board, when it had its public hearing on this, one member of the board felt the town wasn't doing enough in terms of proactive planning and wanted more information about the future project. Now, I think there's significant conversation about what information is appropriate and what step in the process, and another board, other board members identified some possible issues with the development, but felt that it was appropriate that that be fleshed out when the actual development came forward with a special permit that would be before the planning board. And that, as identified in the staff report, that the zoning would allow some flexibility for a better development pattern to take place. There was obviously some significant concern about traffic operations on Galen Street and what future development of any substantial size, you know, how that might impact that area. Again, I think that the appropriate time for that conversation is with the submission of a development proposal, when we could provide for appropriate mitigation and those types of commitments, as well as a more thorough evaluation of what those impacts might be. There's also some discussion about what the impact of the rezoning would have on the development potential of the property. I don't think that the intent or the, excuse me, the impact of changing the zoning is going to significantly, if at all, change the development potential of the property. What it does is allow that to be done in a more coordinated fashion, so create a layout that works with the bounds of the property as opposed to dancing around a different zoning category. There was some public testimony as well before the planning board, five individuals who gave testimony, some who had concerns about the relationship with the river and getting across Non-Antim Road and how safely that could be done, also concerns about demolition of some of the existing buildings and what that might entail. There were two residents who gave general support for the project, although did have some concerns about the success of retail and the potential use of Aldrich Road as a cut-through. Councilor Felton also spoke about some concerns related to zoning and planning and what the appropriate time in the process would be for this zoning consideration, and whether we should instead be looking at design guidelines or maybe an overlay zoning. With that, the board voted four to one to recommend approval of the zoning to the town council, and that brings us here to tonight. Again, be happy to answer any questions the council may have at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. McGoon. Please. Questions will be afterwards, after they make their presentation. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager William York, on behalf of the Boston Development Group. Thank you, Steve, for your report, and for the planning board and the staff for their considered recommendation. This evening, I'm going to introduce the team and then turn the microphone over to Bob Dougherty, who's a vice president at Boston Development Group, for just a brief introductory statement, and then Michael Wang will go through a slide presentation of the proposal and the site. With me this evening is Jody Zussman, who's the COO, the chief operating officer of Boston Development Group, which was started, I think, by her grandfather many years ago, Bob Dougherty, who I previously mentioned, as well as Michael Wang, who's our architectural land use consultant. And I'll turn it quickly over to Michael.
Oh, Bob. Thank you, Bill. Mr. President, council members. My name is Bob Dougherty. I'm a vice president with Boston Development Group and also a partner in our development initiative on Galen and Water Streets. As many of you may know, Boston Development Group has been the longstanding owner of 51 through 57 Water Street, acquiring the property back in 2000. Over the succeeding years, we've witnessed, unfortunately, a general decline in abutters property conditions. It's evidenced by the closure of the U.S. Petroleum Gas Station and the actual demolition of that. At 88 Galen Street, a duplex residence, which was burned in November of 2013, was not rebuilt and is still vacant, and the former Colonial GMC Buick dealership, which was shuttered back in November 2018. All of these have added to the decline and the blight along this portion of Galen Street, which is essentially the gateway to Watertown. When the opportunity arose to purchase the Colonial Buick, the Zussman family did not hesitate to act. We wound up acquiring not only the Colonial, but also the defunct gas station, marginally performing Valvoline store, a vacant lot, and a small bungalow in a state of disrepair. Coupled with our 51 Water Street property, we now own five acres of land on Galen and Water Streets, abutting the transit yard. During this time, we met with Watertown planning officials, we carefully reviewed the current zoning, and most importantly, we reviewed the 2011 Watertown strategic framework and the 2015 comprehensive plan to understand the town's vision and goals. Although currently we could develop 83% of the site for a life sciences R&amp;D use, our review and analyses has shown that the limited business zone comprising just 17% of the site complicates planning. It does not provide the best possible development and/or land use planning that the comprehensive plan and the strategic framework aspire to. We look forward to working closely with the town to revitalize the site and the area with a Class A life sciences transit-oriented development, which is consistent with zoning, the comprehensive plan, and the strategic framework, and which will allow us, hopefully, to increase the public realm by having a near 25,000-square-foot park at a point closest to the Watertown Square, provide accessible open space through the site, eliminate seven curb cuts along Galen Street, enliven the Galen Street streetscape and the pedestrian experience, and potentially rework Water Street in a fashion that will help improve traffic flow and alleviate the traffic congestion and the bottleneck at the bridge in the square. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Michael Wang. I'm a partner with Form and Place, which is an architecture, planning, and urban design firm in Newton, Massachusetts, and we have the distinct pleasure of working on both the public and private sides of the equation, and have had house doctor contracts with Mass Development for a number of years. We're currently an urban design on-call consultant for the city of Newton. I also am a member of the Real Estate Advisory Committee for the Urban Land Institute, and in that capacity, I often chair technical assistance panels in communities such as this, looking to help with economic development strategies and implementation policies. I was before you in 2016, helping to draft the regional mixed-use district that facilitated the Arsenal Yards project. So Mr. McGoon and Mr. Dougherty have both laid out a number of the things that were in my presentation, but hopefully I can provide some more detail. This introductory slide just reiterates what Mr. Dougherty explained, that the Boston Development Group has assembled a five-acre parcel, 83% of which is in the I-2 district currently, and 17%, four small parcels of limited business along the Galen Street corridor. The goal is to reclassify those smaller parcels to allow for a more holistic development And as mentioned before, I thought I would just provide a little more detail on some of the aspects of the strategic framework and the comprehensive plan, and how the zoning map amendment that's being proposed will help to fulfill a number of the goals in that vision, which was generated by a collaborative community effort, for sure. A couple of slides on the strategic framework. You can see here highlighted are a number of the economic development focus areas, which include South Square along the river. As far as implementation strategy, one of the most important aspects of that that's called out is the development of public-private partnerships with entities such as Boston Development Group, the development of tools that helps to reduce impediments on challenging sites, and there are challenges on this site, which I will go into in more detail. The strategic framework has a series of goals. We think most of these are improved by this particular proposal. Capitalizing on key industry clusters is an important one, and the life science typology is something that is becoming prevalent in Watertown. There also is a tremendous opportunity here on this site at the end of the Galen Street corridor to strengthen the identity of the town, and it really is a gateway location with very underutilized parcels, and the opportunity to create a new character of streetscapes and public realm here is tremendous, I would argue. And importantly, it is a transit-oriented development location with its proximity to the MBTA bus yard. In addition, the strategic framework has a section specifically addressing South Square. Some of those points, key points, are highlighted in the lower right-hand corner. Talks about an ideal location for mix of uses, including office, research, housing, and retail. Again, it mentions the major gateway opportunity here, and the rendering that you see in the upper right-hand corner shows the idea of creating a new urban square, a square that could be in dialogue with Watertown Square across the river and really serve to connect these two worlds, again, capitalizing on the transit-oriented development location. I want to just read one brief quote here, which is in a box. It says, "The south side of the Charles River across from Watertown Square has the potential to become a destination in and of itself and a complement to the animation on the north side." And it goes on to say, "The degree to which the south side can build on the character of the main square and develop a strong identity will depend on managing traffic and overcoming land ownership barriers that have stymied new development." And I would argue that those two things are being addressed by this proposal. Again, briefly, the comprehensive plan, as you are all very familiar with, calls upon many of the same themes, emphasizing the opportunity for higher density of development at the TOD location, ideas about connectivity and enhancing the vibrancy at this particular important location along the corridor. And it talks about creating a unifying character to that streetscape and improve public realm. It says, "There is no unifying character to the land uses or the design of the buildings along this corridor. In fact, this section of Galen Street has been considered as a site for potential higher-density transit-oriented development and an improved public realm." This slide simply summarizes a number of those points, so I won't go through it in too much detail, but to say that I really do believe that there is a strong opportunity here for transformative development on the south side that will take underutilized parcels to create this vibrant gateway. It will do things such as promote a well-balanced tax base, create that public realm, and it will address traffic and safety issues, pedestrian issues, which I will go into in more detail This graphic is the current zoning map. You can see the Galen Street corridor lined with limited business, shown in pink, and as Mr. McGoon described, the industrial uses along Water Street, abutting the MBTA yard down to the river. Zooming in on the site, you can see here, in the red outline represents a little over five acres that Boston Development Group has assembled. Adding in the LB parcels here, the four parcels along Galen Street, you can see represents about 37,000, 38,000 square feet of land, which is 17% of the total site that they are hoping to develop. Just to quickly give you an overview of the site, I think what's important to point out is this site, from the intersection of Water Street and Galen Street to the south, offers 600 lineal feet of frontage on Galen Street. And as Mr. Dougherty mentioned, there are seven curb cuts, many of which are quite wide, now accessing either vacant or blighted properties. It is not a pedestrian-friendly environment at the moment. There is really no usable open space. There are no opportunities for connection across the site down to the river. This next image speaks to the existing topography found on the site, and as you can see on the left, images of the large retaining walls that divide the site from Galen Street to Water Street. And make note that the Water Street elevation is approximately elevation 10. At the high point of the site on Galen Street, you're at elevation 36, so there's a 26-foot elevation change from front to back. And this is what complicates development of this parcel, sort of in a piecemeal approach, but rather could present a tremendous opportunity by using techniques such as putting underground parking that would not, would be below the elevation of Galen Street in favor of incorporating open space. I have a few more. This graphic is a conceptual site diagram that is what could be done, an example of what could be done under the current zoning. And you can see here, in the I-2 district at the top of the screen, we're showing two life science buildings. And then, in the LB district, outlined in the red dot-dash line, there's a small mixed-use building shown there, which is limited by the need to provide parking and the required open space. I think you can argue that this is a substantial development, but perhaps not the highest and best use of the site, not a holistic vision that offers opportunities for an improved public realm. The open space in this instance does meet the requirements for, related to the FAR, but it is along the perimeter of the site and not well-fought through. This is the graphic that was presented with the map for the amendment. Again, in orange, you can see the four parcels. With the transition of those parcels to the I-2 district, I'm going to share with you a few graphics that show the possibilities. Boston Development Group has been exploring the realignment of Water Street. You can see here, changing its geometry to meet Galen Street at a perpendicular geometry across from Aldrich Road. This frees up an opportunity for a substantial new park. The one depicted here is roughly a half an acre at the corner closest to the river and Watertown Square. The other interesting aspect of this realignment of the street is there's an opportunity for the MBTA for the MBTA to consider a new access point to the yard. And I know Boston Development Group has had some positive discussions with the MBTA, and I'm sure we could elaborate on that more, but here are some of the ramifications of that. Currently, there are, is about two-hundred-and-thirty feet of curb cuts that span from the edge of the river to the edge of the site where Water Street currently meets Galen. Obviously, the Water Street component of that on the right can be adjusted by the street realignment, but if you can imagine the opportunity for the bus access to the yard to change, this really could provide, you know, the opportunity for a new pedestrian environment that would provide that connectivity that's called for in the strategic framework and the comp plan. Just a couple more images. Again, just going back to the comprehensive plan and referring to Chapter Six, Open Space, among the goals, it says, "Identify opportunities to create new parks. Encourage landowners to preserve open space." And this diagram on the right shows not only that park that I was speaking to before, but the fact that with a holistic approach to site design, you can have a number of parks that are accessible by pedestrian connections across the site. It also opens up opportunities for interesting pedestrian-bike connections along Water Street through the park and down to the river. This graphic is an example of a conceptual site plan under the new zoning. And again, circled in the blue, you can see the well-thought-through, nicely-designed open space. You can see the quality of the new streetscapes along Galen reinforced by a street wall of one of the two buildings, which also fronts on the new park. I know that Boston Development Group is interested in providing some retail uses along the Galen Street frontage to help enliven that streetscape, but this gives you a sense of a proposed site diagram that would provide forty percent open space. And again, in the I-2 district, the open space requirement is proportionally related to the FAR that you choose. So if you're going for a 2.0, which is the maximum FAR, you need to provide forty percent open space. So in summary, we feel that the map amendment does marvelous things for the opportunity of fulfilling the vision for the south side, including TOD location, creating a new public realm, and providing a new gateway to the square, both from the, approaching from the Mass Pike, as well as public transportation, and we feel like the holistic approach to the site is critical for this prominent location. My last slide is just a reminder that, you know, following a zoning map amendment, should this be approved, there will be a full special permit and site plan review process, which will include continuing review with town departments, community meetings, public hearings with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, and it is that time that many of the design aspects of the project will be further vetted. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't want to mess this whole thing up.
Is this the, this one?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. Okay.
Steve and Michael have well-articulated, I think, the map amendment that's before you, and expressed its compliance and consistency with the vision and goals of the town's long-range plans. What I would like to point out again, as Michael have, and I believe Steve did, was that the owners can develop the site now as a life-science lab, and I'd point out to you, all of the area outside of, I guess, the four lots that you can see here could be developed as a life-science cluster, if you will, all of which is called for by the town's long-range plans. It would be in full compliance with that. Transit-oriented, right in Watertown Square, could dress up the front of the property. The differential is that if this map amendment goes through, it doesn't give us any significantly greater development. It gives us a much better land-use plan, an ability, if, Mike, you can go now to the conceptual plan, an ability to create public realm, to create access to the river, to create a realignment of the street that has been discussed with DPW and with some very strong excitement from their end, that gives the MBTA the opportunity to have a different access point into their property. That brings jobs and taxes, roadway realignment, and improved pedestrian connection to the square, all of the other benefits of public realm, access to the river, access through the site, all publicly accessible space within the property which is intended to be an open campus. So I suggest to the council that appropriate planning of the site is consistent with this map amendment, and ask for your support. We're here to answer any questions you have, and that would conclude our presentation.
Thank you. Councilor Cornelis, we'll go back to you first.
Thank you. I think this might be more appropriate for Mr. Magoon to answer. In the limited-business district, what would be the height versus the height for the I-2 in this particular area of town?
In the, excuse me, limited-business district, the maximum height is forty feet in four stories, and there are some notes associated with that. In the L-2, or, excuse me, I-2, it's fifty-five feet or five stories.
And what about the setback?
Setbacks in the LB zone, side is fifteen feet, and rear is twenty. In the industrial-two-zone, front, and there is no front setback in the LB zone. In the I-2, it's ten feet front yard setback, twenty-five-foot side yard, and thirty-foot rear yard.
Right, so it's ten feet in the front, twenty-five side, and thirty in the rear?
Correct.
Is that correct?
And again, there are notes associated with that that may have some other distinctions, which I can get into if you want to, but that, generally speaking, that's the setbacks.
And if I may, it's either for you or for the proposed developers, where would the new access point be for the MBTA yard? If it were approved?
I can, I can point it out on this plan, Councilor Cornelis. If you see the street, Michael actually has one that has pointed out, it would go directly down what we call Lower Water Street, and it would be an access point directly atop the MBTA yard, and they would have the opportunity to have access to the site. It also could, in the planning stage, have some opportunities to improve turning movements as you turn down into that street, and it would also, hopefully, cut back on the number of buses that would be exiting down on the pinch point by the bridge.
If I could just add to that, well, I certainly don't disagree with what Mr. York said. I would say that I think when we get into the site design process, some of those details will work out, and I think there's an opportunity to significantly improve not only the access to the bus yard, but how that also interacts and impacts traffic on Galen Street. Right now, you have to have a phase of the signal that protects the buses coming out of the yard. If that's moved for, if we're able to move that further up Galen Street, and we're able to separate that from the intersection, the major intersection, we could perhaps significantly improve traffic operations in the area.
If I may, as a follow-up, the area that's designated as the triangle for the proposed park, or conceptual park, would there be a traffic entrance there, or would that be closed off?
I'm certainly with you.
Is that vehicular, I consider the orange or yellow?
Yes, that is just showing a sort of a pedestrian-bike connection, the orange. So in fact, Water Street would bend down and to meet Galen at Aldrich, and the park would infill the existing Water Street area. There would be a sort of a swap there.
So there would not be vehicular entrance?
Exactly.
At the current entrance to Water Street?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Councilor Feltner?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank Boston Development Group and partners for being here and pointing to strong opportunities for development in this area. I am not feeling secure about this approach, in that I would say, we know pretty much nothing from the planning department about how the I-2 zoning language and change would advance objectives stated in the comprehensive plan. The planning department hasn't provided any statements on facts. You know, it's not just about area times far, but I think we should be calculating some raw data about traffic impacts, height, parking, street life, or even subjective info and trade-offs for the town. So again, it's not written into the zoning. And as many of you know, I was reluctant to vote for the RMD zoning, RMUD, ahead of more specific area planning, but at least the RMUD had information about its goals and relating it to the comprehensive plan. The I-2 zoning language does not. My understanding, this would just change these parcels, we're not changing anything about the I-2 zoning. And the spirit of and purpose of zoning is to give an idea of what's happening in town, and the public really doesn't know. So town council knows, you know, about this much of the plan, which is conceptual plan on this map diagram tonight, but we can anticipate this much impact, including on our roads and in design, that council will not have any voting input on this with our current process. I would like to note the correction in the notes of the planning board. I didn't say that we don't have any process for large projects, that's not what I said. So I don't know if I can make a friendly amendment to the language to committee or not.
We're not at that point. We haven't even put it on the floor for discussion on that yet, so hold that thought.
Okay.
Are there any other questions before I open it up for a public hearing? Seeing none, I now open it up for a public hearing and ask for questions or comments from the general public. Please identify yourself as well.
Has anybody made contact with the MBTA for their input on the project?
Please identify yourself for the record.
Say it again, please.
Please identify yourself for the record.
David Kane, Ninety-Nine Pleasant Street, lived here for thirty-three years.
Can you get that, please?
Yes, council member. So we have had, you know, initial brief talks.
Speak into the mic.
We have had an initial brief talk with the MBTA. I think what came out of that discussion was, they liked the Aldrich Street, you know, egress, because it helped the bus geometry for the turn, both a left turn onto Galen Street and a right turn. So that was something that they liked. Other than that, they did say that they felt like the Watertown was, you know, that site is specifically was critical to their mission going forward, they're just not sure, they see at some point, maybe it's electric hybrid buses that they store at that site, but they didn't have any plans, but they were excited to see something potentially happening there with the potential to maybe help them, you know, with the turning radius, getting in and getting out.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Please identify yourself for the record.
Curtis Whit, excuse me, Curtis Whitney, Forty-three Granville, Watertown. Just a couple of comments. I am excited to support this rezoning, as it will enable a tremendous economic redevelopment of this section of town, long overdue. As a point of reference, back in nineteen eighty-five, my father was proposing redevelopment down there with a hotel. So you can see that it, things move pretty slow around here. This is a great opportunity. The step will be consistent with the town comprehensive plan, which calls for transit-related development, significantly improve the existing tax base of the currently aged properties, add the potential of improving green space, and bring additional employment to the area, and thus be a much more vibrant area. Arsenal Street is a case in point, has shown how investments in redeveloping larger outdated properties are of benefit to the community as a whole. This is something, it's an opportunity that you got, that this council and the community can embrace, and through other vetting boards, the planning board and ZBA, just as we have in all the projects throughout the community, develop an area into a whole new vibrant area of town. The economy's strong now, is a great opportunity to take this and run with it, and I strongly recommend the board, the council does not miss this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
Bob Lourcelle, I'm from Two-Sixty Mount Over. Although I have no problem with this, I don't quite understand why this only changes necessary. And I also understand, if you're going to change the zoning, why you wouldn't complete the block and enlarge the I-2 zone. I can see advantages for the I-2. It offers housing, for example. Limited business doesn't. But I don't understand kind of the rationale of the issue that it's complex to work with the two zones. As an architect, I don't find that to be terribly challenging, but...
Steve, can you help us with that, or? Please?
Sure. A couple of things, and maybe also to maybe address a little bit the comment the council made earlier. This isn't a proposal to reimagine what the I-2 zone is, or to change the substance or the purpose of the I-2 zone, to make it a different, interrecognize or realize some goal or foundation that the comprehensive plan or strategic framework had laid out. That's already happened, and the industrial-two-zone represents what we want to have in this area. What this request is to change and make it a consistent zoning across the property. So I would respectfully agree that if we were reimagining the industrial-two-zone, then getting, having much more conversation about what the purpose and ideas that that zone ought to encompass, I think would be obviously part of the conversation. In terms of Mr. Lourcelle's question, and why don't we expand it beyond that and take in some additional parcels, I think one of the reasons that this request is before you and has been supported by the staff is, again, creating a consistent zoning across ownership. You know, a collection of parcels in common ownership, which provides an opportunity for a consistent development pattern across that broader parcel. The other properties in the limited-business zone are still separately owned and have, again, that frontage on Galen Street, they're smaller parcels, which typically would have that, retail use, and the depth and size of those parcels are conducive and consistent with that zoning. The larger, having this larger parcel under all one ownership, again, the consistent zoning pattern allows for a more coordinated development to take place.
Thank you. Anyone else in the general public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I now close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council to bring this forward.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the council adopt...
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Council adopts the zoning map amendment by removing the parcels of land located at 70, 78, 84-86, and 88 Galen Street from the limited business district and into the I-2 industrial two-zoning district in keeping with the abutting properties.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before I open it up for questions and comments, again, I do want to remind folks that this is a zoning amendment that needs two-thirds of the Council, which would be six votes for this to pass this evening. So, I now open it up for anyone that hasn't had a chance. Council Petrelli.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So, the first thing I want to point out is that these four parcels have uses of a, or in fact, if you look at the auto dealership, gas station, and oil change shop, three very automobile-intensive retail uses. So, we need to understand that this area actually had a lot of traffic-intensive uses to begin with, and by redeveloping it into this biotech complex, it will actually remove a lot of that vehicle-intensive businesses that previously were there. I guess there's really only two questions we need to ask ourselves and the Council about when we consider things like this, a zoning map amendment. And the first question is, does the zoning change support the vision in Watertown's master planning documents? Those two master planning documents are, of course, the Strategic Framework for Economic Development and the Comprehensive Plan. And I look at this and I say, you know, just basically on its face, what's been presented is yes, it does. And then the second question that we should ask ourselves is, will this zoning change result in a project that's better for the residents of Watertown than what could be built without it? And certainly, if we look at sort of the better utilization of the site, will allow sort of improved amassing of the buildings, will keep two large contiguous areas of open green space, and improve the traffic circulation in and around the site, including to the MBTA yard. So, again, I look at that and I say, yes, this project could be built without the zoning change, but it, I think it will be a much better project for the citizens of Watertown if we adopt this zoning change. So, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to attend the Planning Board meeting, and I want to acknowledge Member Shaw's concerns that he aired that night. I understand these concerns about zoning before planning, but I think this proposal is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the Strategic Framework. You know, maybe at some point in time, this council needs to take a look at whether we should review our current zoning and the Comprehensive Plan, but I think it's really difficult to punish a developer for doing exactly what the town stated it wanted in the Comprehensive Plan. I agree there, you know, valid traffic concerns about this site. However, I think it's really important to note that 83% of the land in question is already zoned I-2. The developer will be able to proceed with this proposed project under the current zoning, even if this amendment does not pass. I agree with Council Petrelli that by accepting this amendment, I believe we will end up with a much better design. I realize that the plans before us tonight are not binding and may change in the future, and I also acknowledge there's a lot of uncertainty with regard to the, you know, MBTA site and what may or may not happen there. But I have confidence that, you know, once these plans get before the Planning and the Zoning Board, that those two boards will thoroughly review the proposed plans and they will insist on conditions that they believe will protect the town. So, I too will be supporting this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Council Canelas.
Thank you. Just a question, even though these are conceptual plans, would there be consideration given for signalizing the Water Street intersection?
That's an event that will be signalized.
Okay, thank you. After careful consideration and the increase of open space that's going to be required with the zone change, if this were to go through, it's not very often that I give a yay to very many developments, and I see Mr. York chuckling there, but I will be supporting this. I think it would be the best move for this particular area on Galen Street on the south side of the town. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Council Palomba.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation from both Steve and from the folks over at Boston Development Group. I will be supporting this, but I do want to raise a couple of questions. I do want to be clear that this is a benefit to the developer, that this is a step that we're taking that will help the developer in their pursuit of the property, use of the property. It may also help Watertown, but let's be real clear about what we're doing here. We are helping the developer take a step to achieve its goals. I do believe that you could have, could, I actually, in discussion with the developers, I was really hoping that they could acquire some space next to the present property that they are requesting the change so that we could consider some housing. They are open to that in the future of possibly acquiring the space immediately to the right or to the left, excuse me, where you're facing, which would be, would be a zone for some housing. I do, what I hear is that the change will make consistent zoning across the property that will make for more coordinated development to be allowed. I think those, that is true. It would be a lot easier to work with that space if all of that was available, if the zoning, map of zoning amendment would pass, and I do think that would make for a more development that has more green space. I do want to say that while this is a conceptual plan, and as Council Donato said, is, you know, we have no way to say that this is what will happen, I do want to put forth that I am looking at this conceptual plan fairly close, that what the Development Group does is not going to stray very far from what this conceptual plan is and that because we are taking a little bit of leap of faith, and that leap of faith will, I hope, result in what we see here now, significant green space, two buildings, some retail space on Galen that could be used not only by the employees of those two, of those two buildings, but as well as residents, a park that can be used by all residents. So, that, what I'm looking at is not, is something that I'm very, going to hold people in a sense, too. And I also know that the, the Boston Development Group will go through the process, and there may be some changes along height in the building, amassing of the building, but all that will be worked out through going through the special permit process with the Planning Department, with the Planning Board and with the ZBA. So, I will be supporting this, and I do want to acknowledge that this is a benefit to the developers, and I would hope that they will recognize that and will follow closest possible to their conceptual plan.
Any other comments? Council Feltner.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, again, we don't really know what we're getting. We have a lot of too many unknowns. We have no guarantees, and we're talking about a conceptual plan with no zoning language other than our current I-2 zoning language, which has things in it that aren't identified in the Comprehensive Plan, and, you know, including what we're working for on trying to update parking and climate zone, climate change actions and all sorts of things. So, I don't feel comfortable as a counselor, the calls from my constituents who there, you know, have no, been no community meetings, if you will, on this and not getting a clear picture from planning on how the zoning language, not that people are necessarily against redeveloping this area or the idea of having a master plan or grouping together, but there are just too many unknowns and kind of good feelings here that we really don't know what we're getting, and we already know that we'd like to make changes to our, to our zoning, but who knows when that will be, I guess. So, I don't know if this is the time if I make a
Be my guest.
...motion to refer to Council Committee for consideration that would also include a community meeting and, you know, I don't know if you put a time certain on that so it doesn't, developers can be sure that it's not something that drags out too long.
If you could do that, we'd need to get a second to discuss that. Is there a second to the friendly amendment? Seeing none, it does not pass.
Okay.
Further comments?
So, I evoke charter privilege and make a motion to table the vote on the zoning amendment for parcels on Galen Street per Charter Section 28B.
Mr. President, this is not the first time this matter has come before the Council.
Attorney Rich, could you please help us with this?
Thank you, Mr. President. As has been indicated already, the charter privilege specifically states that the charter privilege may only be used on the first occasion that a question of adopting any measure is put to the Council, except in cases of emergency. So, if it has been put to the Council, I would defer, because I don't recall exactly what was raised before. This might be a question for Mr. Magoon, but if it requires that the measure having been put to the Council.
Well, it was put before the Council to refer it to the Planning Board. I don't know if that's considered, we didn't have any discussion about it.
Right, that would be, that would be the referral, but in my opinion, that's, that would not be a measure put before the Council for actual consideration.
Okay, so, it, she's, the counselor has chosen to use her counsel, her charter privilege. In order for us to maintain, without re-advertising and so forth, we would have to do this to a date certain to take this up again, correct?
According to the Charter Privilege Section, the vote shall be postponed until the next meeting of the Town Council, regular or special. So, we'd simply be postponing it, so this matter would be continued until that time. In my opinion, where we've satisfied the requirements for a public hearing, that notice process has already been accomplished. It would be the continuing, continuing that the public hearing portion of the hearing has already been closed, so no further, no further comment or testimony with respect to the public hearing. It would simply be the vote would be continued from tonight until the next regular meeting of the Town Council.
Okay, so this is continued to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motions, orders, and resolutions. Review and acceptance of a public easement on the property at 73 Moore Street for public access and utilities. Mr. Magoon.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Council. This is a request that is before you. As you'll recall, the planning, excuse me, the Zoning Board has approved a residential development for a project located on Moore Street, and as a condition of that approval before building permit, the developer needed to enter into this easement agreement with the town. So, this does a few things. The easement allows access for the town to access and maintain stormwater management utilities on the property. It also provides for pedestrian access through the property to Casey Park. It also allows for bicycle access through the property to Casey Park, and it also provides for public access to vehicles parking on the town portion of the property at the rear abutting Casey Park. In exchange for that, the developer does get, also get the right to have their visitors park on town property when it's not reserved for public use. That's the basics of the easement document. KP Law had provided that as well as the easement document itself with an attachment. I did get one question, a couple of questions from counselors. One had to do with the maintenance, and I did clarify with the property owner that in terms of snow and that type of maintenance, daily maintenance, that they would take care of that across the town property as well, which only makes sense. The other question Counselor Feltner had was regarding the access across the property, and so I did provide via email earlier today, a copy of the site plan, which showed the access across the property. Also, I wanted to note that, so that's sort of in two forms, it's generally giving the public the right to access across this property, but also then having access from those public parking spaces at the rear of the property to Casey Park. Happy to answer any questions Counselor may have.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the easement first?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the order accepting the easement from La Court Affordable Trust LLC, known as the grantor, and conveying an easement for parking to the grantor on the terms and conditions set forth in the Amending and Superseding Grant of Easements and authorize the town manager to execute the Amending and Superseding Grant of Easements on behalf of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Council Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had two questions. One was with regards to the parking easement to the grantor, where we would be allowing visitors to park in the spaces. I guess my question is, how, how is it going to be monitored to ensure that tenants of the property aren't parking in the town spaces and thereby, thereby depriving the public of their use?
Sure. We did talk about that with the property owner. He has a parking management plan associated with the residence, so the residents will have to have a parking pass or sticker or something of that nature, and he would make sure that they aren't utilizing those spots. Obviously, it'd also be clear if someone's parked there every day that that's a resident, you know, a tenant of the building, not a visitor.
And then my second question, if I'm not mistaken, the only way to access the town parking is through the grantor's property.
Correct.
So, my concern is with regard to paragraph 10 that says the grantor has the right to terminate all easements with the exception of the drainage easement if the parcel is no longer used for the apartment-style building that was approved in the special permit. So, if at some point in the future, that building is no longer used as an apartment building, the town will lose access to, over the property to reach the town parking spots?
The idea with that aspect is that if the property at some point in the future were to be redeveloped and the building removed and they, they came up with a completely different development proposal for that, it may not make sense to have those parking spaces there. It may not make sense to have access through the property to access those parking spaces. That still would remain town property, so it was very important to the applicant that if that use goes away, that we revisit it and, and, you know, have an opportunity to revisit that and decide what makes sense. We still would have access to the town property from the other side of Casey Park and the remainder of Capitol Street that, you know, terminates at the park. So, it's not like we wouldn't be able to get to the property, but the one thing that would remain, and we made sure that it was in perpetuity, was access to the utilities that are on the ground.
Thank you. Council Gannon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. My concern, of course, would be that the, whoops. My concern would be that the residents and their, I mean, the visitors would be taking over the parking, but is there any provision for signage out front to say that there are public parking spaces in the back?
Yeah, there's signage at the front and in the back of the property that, or parking lot that says these spaces, which I think will have a different color striping, are available for the public at certain times and available for visitors other times.
And further through you, Mr. President, will these spaces be listed on the will these spaces be listed on the availability of winter parking, off-street parking?
Yeah, that's certainly something we would do.
Okay, and how is the delineation between the town parking spaces and the developments parking space?
They would have both signage and a different color striping on the parking.
Good, thank you.
Councillor Canales.
Thank you. As a follow-up to the parking situation, again, I noticed in the schematic that was in our material that there is signage and there's also wording at a first-come basis. Now, if residents or team were using Casey Park, and this were in the evening, would management of the complex be there to actually ensure that Watertown folks who were using the park had availability of those parking spaces?
Yes, in the sense that if a resident of the building had a visitor there and they were taking a spot, I don't want to leave the impression that they're going to go, make them move their car and open it up for, you know, a little league person. But it's there for the use of users of the park, little league or whoever, or somebody who's just utilizing the park for recreation, as well as visitors to the building.
Thank you. If I may, as a follow-up, I'm just concerned, let's say, in the summertime, where the park would have more active use, and residents may also be having guests.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So if there were an overflow, is it 14 spaces that the town has?
I didn't actually count, but I can do that.
I think I read it was 14. I could be mistaken.
Yes, 14. And so, yes, those would be available. And if there were a confluence of visitors as well, to the building as well as park users, then those spaces would fill up. And, you know, I think one of the things that is a reason that we would entertain this is because, you know, in that sense is that it's a better situation than what we have today. Although currently, the building's vacant, so not a lot of use at all. But with the use of the building previously, you know, this agreement, conceptual agreement had expired with the previous property owner. So there was no right to use, necessarily, you could across their property to use it for the public at all. Prior to that, when the agreement was in place, it was limited to evenings and when there was a snow ban. And we hadn't advertised that on the list of parking spaces available. Councillor President and I were talking about that earlier, that, you know, we need to do a better job of making the public aware of its availability.
Thank you.
Councillor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was a little concerned it said under the start of the language for amending and superseding grant of easement, it says approximately 3,000 square feet. But I thought it, on the map, indicated 4561 square feet. So it's kind of a large discrepancy. I don't know if that's particularly important from a legal point of view, but I'm just.
I'll check that. I don't think that, you know, certainly because it's approximate, I don't think that's a problem, but I'll check that.
Okay.
That needs to be adjusted. I will make that adjustment.
And then maybe I'm just not understanding this under number two, where it says the pedestrian passage easement premises shall not be deemed to include a right to park, motorized or non-motorized. Or since we don't have a particular pedestrian path outlined, I'm just not sure what that means.
I think the concern was that if someone were to use a motorized vehicle, not a automobile, but other motorized vehicle,
Oh.
that they aren't interested in having that on their property or stored on their, you know, parked on their property, that we're not looking for motorcycles or, you know, other vehicles.
Okay, but we don't have a particular pedestrian passage outlined. We're just, I mean, it's a parking space. So I just find that confusing, since it's a parking lot. Just trying to understand.
So as the pedestrian, or excuse me, the access point leaves the parking lot and goes across the town property and into the park?
Oh, okay.
That was the delineated area that I think.
So it might block the pedestrian access, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. And the last thing, why are we, why are we not asking them to maintain the town parcel, given it seems to just kind of common sense? It's not that large, and they're going to maintain their parcel. And it's not maybe totally clearly delineated, you know?
So again, I think day-to-day maintenance, clearly, they will take care of that. It's the, you know, if we decided that we wanted to go in and tear it up and do something with the area and repave it, because it is town property, I think the property, the developer is not saying, I'm not interested in. If the town decides it wants something very elaborate on its property, that's their responsibility and their decision. It's not his responsibility to make improvements on our property. In terms of the day-to-day operation, the maintenance, plowing, you know, striping, you know, repairing a pothole, any of those types of things, the property owner's responsible for that.
Okay, just because number seven says the opposite, I thought, maybe I'm not understanding that the town is responsible for maintenance, repair, and replacement of the town parcel. Is there something in the special permit that says they're going to handle snow removal and maintenance? Other maintenance?
I wouldn't say there's necessarily specific language in the approval. As a practical matter, I think the property owner and the town both recognize that he's not going to plow half of his parking lot, and the town come in and plow, you know, or a third, two-thirds of it, and the town come in and plow the back third. That just doesn't make sense. Similarly, if he's maintaining the lot and he's going in and making repairs to potholes, it wouldn't make sense for him to do that on a limited area. Similarly, with the signage and striping, he's going to do that for the entire parking lot, including the town portion. So I think, you know, there's a clear understanding that that's what would take place. The language, I think, was important to the property owner to make sure that there's an understanding that if we're going to do something major, that's not his responsibility.
So you're more covering himself than liability, major damage, et cetera, like you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Woodland.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, that if someone from Watertown was going to be using Casey Park, they could use these parking spots and then use this path to get to the park?
Yeah.
And presumably, this path is safer and more convenient than it exists today?
Yes.
And presumably, the underlying theme is that when there is parking next to a park, we should provide pedestrians with the ability to go from that parking in a safe and convenient way to that park?
Yes, and I would add one point to that, too, that also this allows the general public from the neighborhood who might be walking down the sidewalk to go through this person's property to get to that.
Okay.
Which today, they don't have a legal right to do.
Yeah, great. So just following up, so the theme of parking next to a park and having these access points, access points that connect publicly accessible areas to other publicly accessible areas without a gate seems to be a good theme for something this council should be promoting. It's a great, I'm very excited to see that we are turning a new leaf and that we are changing direction when it comes to this issue. I'm very excited to support this. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I just want to add, this has been a longstanding kind of an issue in the neighborhood. It's a very underutilized public amenity. I'm going to call it an amenity because there are many people in many neighborhoods that would like to be able to have a space to park their car during the winter parking ban. I think it was important councillor Gannon pointed out, and I did say to Mr. Magoon before the meeting, that I was going to hopefully insist on when we put out our little orange things on all the windshields of where you can park your cars, that this is added to the list. And I would say that people are going to use it. This particular owner is being generous to the neighborhood and saying, you could even walk through my property and you can use it to go to the park. Up until now, it's only been during the winter parking ban, you can use those spaces. And then after that, it's mine. So I think this guy, this owner is being extremely generous. And I can say that because I've been in the neighborhood for a long time, went through, we had, we even had a, an advisory committee when the Muscular Therapy Institute was there. We met a couple of times a year. So this is very generous for this community. And I do think that we, you know, he's allowing us much more use of this property than has ever been allowed. So I, we appreciate that, and I hope everyone will support this. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call? No, okay, we're all set. Thank you. 9B is a resolution authorizing transfers in order to fund an agreement with the Department of Public Works, Teamsters Local Union 25, covering the period of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm very pleased to inform you, an agreement has been reached with the Department of Public Works, Teamsters Local Union, number 25, for the three-year contract covering July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. That would be for fiscal years 2021 and 2022. Some of the highlights of the agreement are as follows. The, there are increases, base wage increases as follows. A 2.25% increase effective July 1, 2019. A 2% increase effective July 1, 2020. And a 2% effective July 1, 2021. There are small increases in licenses and certifications within the memorandum agreement that are necessary for the operation of the public works. One of those is the increases, small increases in the water distribution licenses, which are necessary to run the town's water system. There are increases totaling $125 spread through the three-year agreement to the six levels of longevity. There is a new provision titled Division-Specific Stipends. This is in an effort to attract and retain employees and improve the level of service efficiency. And it reads as follows, effective July 1, 2019, a $250 annual stipend will be paid to employees who possess a valid backflow sanitary survey or obverse certification, but only if they have a permanent assignment in the Water Division, Sewer Division, and Forestry Division. There's an increase, again, July 1 of 2020. The last provision that I wanted to mention, again, is new to the, within the memorandum agreement, and it's titled New Positions CDL Requirement. And this is another provision we're putting in to attract DPW employees, new DPW employees. Parties agree to meet within 120 days of the funding of this agreement to discuss two new positions proposed by the union. In addition, the parties agree that effective upon funding the agreement, the town may hire new employees who do not possess a valid commercial driver's license or a CDL, as long as said employees obtain a valid CDL with a one-year of their hire. So, Mr. President, members of the council, I urge your support of the agreement. The agreement is fair to the taxpayers of Watertown, the town, and the union and its members alike. I respectfully ask your favorable consideration of the proposed two transfers. I'll speak briefly to the first transfer. It would be for the general fund. The transfer amount would be $37,200, and that would be from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve to 27 various Department of Public Works general fund accounts. The second transfer would be totaling $29,065, and that would be from the fiscal year 2020 Water Council Reserve and the fiscal year 2020 Sewer Council Reserve. Again, those are for the employees that are funded through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. So again, Mr. President, members of the council, I respectfully ask your favorable consideration of proposed transfers before you this evening. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on the first transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer from the general fund of $37,200 for the Teamsters contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Donato?
Yes.
Councillor Felton?
Yes.
Councillor Gannon?
Yes.
Councillor Canales?
Yes.
Councillor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councillor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Councillor Woodland?
Yes.
Councillor Baze?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The second transfer, please.
Mr. President, I make motion that we approve the transfer of $29,065 from the Water Sewer Enterprise Funds for the Teamsters contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Felton?
Yes.
Councillor Gannon?
Yes.
Councillor Canales?
Yes.
Councillor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councillor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Councillor Woodland?
Yes.
Councillor Baze?
Yes.
Councillor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. And the Committee on Education and School System Matters report regarding the reappointment of Robert Caprillion to the Board of Directors of the Cable Access Corporation. I'm going to ask councillor Baze, who wrote the report, to read the report, please.
So present were councillor Falcoff, councillor Donato, and myself, as well as Bob Caprillion. Susan Falcoff called the meeting to order at 7:16 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to interview Bob Caprillion for reappointment to the Board of Directors of the Cable Access Corporation. Mr. Caprillion stated that he was passionate about bringing local news to Watertown and had been with the WCATV from the beginning. He felt that Watertown Cable is a very important service to the citizens of our community, since it is one of the few local news outlets. He explained that everyone has a role on the board, and his main focus is programming. Mr. Caprillion said that, at his age, he is very selective about what he does with his time, and his main commitment is to WCATV because he strongly believes in its mission. A motion was made to recommend that the full town council confirm the appointment of Bob Caprillion to the Board of Directors of the Cable Access Corporation for a term to expire on September 15, 2020. The motion passed 3 to 0. Other candidates on the agenda rescheduled their meetings for December 17. The minutes were prepared by myself.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Mr. President, I'd like to be recorded as president.
Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion on the reappointment of Robert Caprillion to the Board of Directors of the Cable Access Corporation for a term to expire on September 15, 2020?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Mr. President, I'd like to be recorded as president, please.
Thank you. 10B is a Committee on Human Services and Rules and Ordinance Report regarding the noise ordinance from December 2. Councillors Palumbo and Donato are the chairs. Who's going to read this? Councillor Palumbo?
Thank you. I want to say that both this and the next item are very long, so I have summarized these, the reading. So the committee met on December 2 at 7:07. Present were myself, councillor Baze, councillor Falcoff, as well as councillor Donato, Felton, and Woodland. In the audience were Marcia Cerro, Stephen Kennedy, Leo Martin, councillor Pichorelli, Eileen Ryan, Libby Shaw, David Stokes, and Alodia Thomas. Alodia Thomas. The meeting was recorded by Cable, Watertown Cable Access Television. Uh, the committee, uh, met to continue its, uh, review of the, uh, draft ordinance, and we began this meeting with, on section 90, 95.06. I, I do, sorry, I want to mention and appreciate the, uh, work of, uh, the chair of the Committee on Rules and Ordinances, Counselor Donato, and each of, at this meeting and, and previous and future meetings, we had a, um, a draft that reflected any changes, and, uh, he has done a wonderful job of making sure that what was in front of us was the most up-to-date draft that we were discussing, so appreciations to him. We picked up where we well left off at 95.06. Uh, the committees confirmed that the new table that set the limits for the maximum allow, allowable exterior sound level. Um, then there was an extensive discussion of 95.6B4 and leaf blowers. The committees agreed that the ordinance should focus on the noise that leaf blowers produce and not whether they should be banned. There was a suggestion that a leaf blower ordinance be presented to the council for referral to committees. However, there is no vote on that particular motion. Discussion of, uh, section 95.06B4 included a notion, a motion by, uh, Counselor Feltonner, which was seconded by Counselor Baze, and the motion read as follows. Excuse me. Um, "Noise associated with portable handheld and backpack-style leaf blowers is permitted on weekdays from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and on Sunday, Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and between 9:30 AM and 5:00 PM on legal holidays. On Sundays, leaf blowers can be only used by residents on their property between 9:30 AM and 5:00 PM. In all cases, noise levels shall be not to exceed 65 dBAs." This was voted in, uh, in favor of all except Counselor Woodland, who opposed, uh, the, uh, motion. There was a motion to amend this particular motion only for, uh, changing the time on Saturday to be consistent with Section 3 BA, uh, and that motion was to change the time from 9:30 AM to 5:00 PM, uh, from that to 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM to begin, again, to be consistent with Section 3B. Uh, this co-, motion passed 4 to 2 with Counselors Falcoff and Woodland voting no. Committees also discussed, in addition to Section 50, uh, 95.06, as proposed by, uh, resident Steve Kennedy, Counsel Falcoff made a motion to accept the proposed language and added it as 95.06E. The motion was seconded by Counsel, Counselor Feltonner, and passed 4 to 2 with Counselor Palumba and Counselor Woodland voting no. Further discussion of 95 point, section 95.07 resulted in a motion by Counselor Feltonner, seconded by Counselor Baze, uh, that Section B be removed and replaced with the following. Announcements and music played during graduation exercises and Watertown Interscholastical School games in accordance with agreements pro- proclaimed by the town administration. Um, that passed 411 with Counselor Palumba abstaining and Counselor Woodland voting no. The committees discussed the remaining sections of the ordinance, duties and responsibilities of town departments, enforcement and penalty, and the, and addressed minor changes and approvals with two motions that were approved by account, a vote of 5 to 1 with Counselor Woodland voting no. The committees agreed to meet again on December 17. Uh, the meeting was adjourned at 5, at 9:51 PM, and, uh, the minutes were prepared by Ann Co- Cording.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. There are no action items from this report. Uh, next item is the same committees, uh, and a report on the noise ordinance from December 17, 2019. Counselor Palumba?
Thank you. Um, the committee met on, uh, Tuesday, December 17, at 7 o'clock, 7:05. The meeting began in the Philippine Conference Room. Um, uh, it was stated that Counsel, uh, Woodland could not attend the meeting. He sends his regrets and registered his opposition. Um, uh, present at this meeting were myself, Counsel, uh, myself, Counselor Baze, Anthony Donato, Carolyn Baze, Anthony Donato, Susan Falcoff, and Lisa Feltonner. Also present, uh, were, again, Counsel Vincent Pichorelli, as well as residents Rena Baskin, Peter, uh, Recreation Director Peter Santello, Marcia Cerro, Kate Coyne, Ann Cox, Stephen Kennedy, Leo Martin, Jesse, uh, Department of Public Works, Jesse Mayat, Megan O'Connell, Jill Rees, Libby Shaw, Mark, Counsel President Mark Sedaris, David Stokes, and Alodia Thomas. Again, the minutes, the meeting was recorded by Water Cable, uh, Watertown Cable Access. I stated that the final, that the purpose of this, uh, was to go over every, uh, the complete, uh, ordinance, uh, as the latest draft, as prepared by Counselor, uh, Donato, and to, uh, leave the meeting with a final version of the ordinance that would, could be then forwarded to the town attorney, uh, and eventually, uh, to the town council. There was extensive discussion of section, there were no really discussion of section 95.01 or .02, but there was extensive discussion of 95.03, prohibition of noise pollution, with a number of issues raised by Counselor Falcoff. The committee approved a series of motions that clarified the language and removed discrepancies. All motions passed 5 to 0. There are no sec-, changes to section 95.04 and 95.05. However, members of the committees and the residents, uh, engaged in a serious discussion regarding 95.06 noise standards. In the end, there were no changes made to the maximum malour exterior sound level chart. Section B3 was again discussed at length, resulting in a motion by Counsel, that would be, uh, section 95.06B3, um, resulted in a motion by Counsel Feltonner, seconded by Counsel Donato, to remove the last clause of this section. That was defeated 2 to 3 with Counselors Donato and Falcoff voting in favor. Um, there is also a motion by Counsel Feltonner, seconded by Counsel Falcoff, uh, to add a sentence, to amend the clause to re, provided that the cumulative noise level, if, if all work on, on the site at any one time not exceed 80 dBAs, as measured at a distance of 50 feet from the source. This motion passed 5 to 0. The committees then approved a number of motions with the passage of 5 to 0. Um, they were, Counsel Donato made a motion seconded by Counsel Falcoff to present the final draft of the noise ordinance to the town lawyer and the town council. Counsel Falcoff made a motion seconded by Counsel Feltonner to make a referral to the committees for a leaf blower ordinance. Counsel Feltonner made a motion seconded by Counsel Donato to request the Department of Community Development and Planning look into how other cities and towns, particularly Newton, Somerville, and Cambridge, are handling enforcement of their noise ordinance. Counsel Palumba made, uh, made a motion seconded by Counsel Falcoff to request that the Health Department, uh, produce educational materials to help explain the noise ordinance. Um, the meeting was adjourned at 10:27 PM, and again, the minutes were created by, uh, Ann Co- Cording. Uh, after consultation with the town attorney, uh, this is, uh, was decided that two of the motions should be action items, um, and I could read those at, when, whenever.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Um, we have two action items.
Yes. Uh, the town council referred to, that the town council referred to the committees, uh, a leaf blower ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Pichorelli?
Uh, Mr., yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I think, um, at this point in time, this referral should be to the Rules and Ordinances Committee, uh, to develop a leaf blower ordinance. I think this has exceeded the authority of the, uh, Human Services Committee, and it would, uh, go more smoothly just as a straight Rules and Ordinances, uh, referral. So I would make an amendment, uh, request an amendment to that motion.
Counselor Baze?
This is all about humans. This is all about neighbors and things. I, it seems to me like this really should also be in the Human Services.
I, I do have a, also some of the same concerns, because we're developing a noise ordinance that's going to address the decibel levels and so forth, where this is strictly an ordinance as to the use of leaf blowers. So, I would suggest that it's a, it's an ordinance that should be written by the Rules and Ordinances Committee, because all of the other issues that go with leaf blowers are being addressed in the current noise ordinance. That's what I would suggest. Counselor Baze?
But you told us we weren't allowed to talk about leaf blowers, so we didn't, and we, our hands were tied in terms of talking about leaf blowers.
But if, well, I'm looking at your noise ordinance stuff to date, it's, it's got all kinds of levels for leaf blowers included in it. So this is a separate ordinance that says, like, I heard at some of these meetings, people were discussing the leaf blower ordinance they have in Newton, and they thought that it was working well, and maybe we could mirror that. So I would suggest that the Rules and Ordinances Committee could look at that, strictly that ordinance that deals only with leaf blowers. Yes. Counselor Palumba?
Actually, I, I, uh, agree with you on this issue. I, I do think that we did our job as a Human Service Committee to deal with the issue of noise, and, um, that now there is a ordinance, uh, there's a referral to have an ordinance that addresses the issue of the use of leaf blowers. Um, and that ordinance, uh, would be written and debated, um, uh, by the, uh, appropriate committee, which would be the Committee on Rules and Ordinances.
Are there any other comments on this? Counselor Feltonner?
Uh, just one comment for, it seems even for expediency, which I know is not the, the main priority. We want to have the best ordinance possible whenever we write ordinances. But given everything else we have go on, it would be also a lot easier scheduling with three counselors instead of a full six counselors joint committee, et cetera. So, um, I, I like the idea, but of course I'm on Rules and Ordinances, so I'm biased.
Are there any other comments about this referral? Counselor Woodland?
It's, uh, it's just interesting. We got a very narrow referral. It was extremely narrow, in the most narrow sense of the word. Uh, and what resulted from that was, uh, a lot more than was ever intended to. So, I, in my mind, we don't need to even make this referral, because the current ordinance already has significant implications for leaf blowers. So we wouldn't even need a separate piece from the draft that was sent over. Um, it's just, yeah, again, it's interesting to me that now we care about being within the scope of the referral. Um, it's nice. It's a trend in the right direction. Um, so, I guess, moving forward, if we're going to say it should go to one committee over the other, I tend to agree with that. But in the end, I'm not even going to support this referral, because it's something we've already done and shouldn't have done, weren't authorized, I would argue, to do. And, uh, yeah.
Well, I, in, in attending and listening to some of these meetings, there was discussion about a leaf blower ban. So I think that's completely, this is a referral that was requested by a previous counselor more than once, and I do think that if that was going to be considered as an ordinance, that that would bring a certain set of people to the room to have a discussion about it. So I do think it, if we're going to talk about it, it is an appropriate manner to do that. Counselor Feltonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say that, you know, as, as this unfolded and looking at Newton's ordinance as well, there's a lot more detail you can get into just specifically around leaf blowers, and, um, um, it's easy to get bogged down on that without that focus. So I would support this referral going toward Rules and Ordinances to consider a leaf blower ordinance.
Are there any other comments? Counselor Canelus?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think we're going above and beyond. Uh, it's just a little bit too cumbersome from, uh, the standpoint of enforceability. Um, I, I do have my concerns about the noise ordinance. I know that we are talking about specific leaf blowers at this point. I will support sending this to, uh, Rules and Ordinances just, uh, for the sake of hashing it out and having an open discussion. But overall, I do not support, uh, the route that we're taking on this noise ordinance.
Okay, we have, can I get a, we have a motion on an amendment, which is to refer just to Rules and Ordinances. Just to Rules and Ordinances, yes.
Mr. President, do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's okay.
The ayes have it. So we will refer this to the, that takes precedence of...
We're going to vote on the entire referral.
Okay, well...
The referral has amended.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion on the referral that's amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor Woodland, recorded as opposed. Uh, next action item is that the Health Department produce educational materials to help explain the noise ordinance. Can I get?
Make the motion?
Yes. Counselor Palumba makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Woodland?
If anyone could explain the noise ordinance in its current form, then, I mean, that'd be amazing. I don't think anyone, even on the joint committees, could give that thing a, a full, in-depth explanation in a, a way that's easy to digest and understand. Uh, so, and, we don't know if it's going to pass the council, so I think this is extremely premature to say that we should be producing education materials on an ordinance that hasn't been finalized and may not be finalized in its current form. So, just throwing that out there.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yeah, that was, I guess, my, um, echoing, uh, Counsel Woodland, that the, which noise ordinance is this educational material going to explain? The one that we currently have? Or the one that has been proposed that hasn't been actually voted on? So, um, it, in my mind, it may make sense that if the ordinance is actually, new ordinance is actually voted on, that this would produce material on the new noise ordinance, but is the intention to produce material on the current noise ordinance? Or, I guess I'm a little confused about what the intention of what we're, what we're doing, or would make, be prudent to wait until we, this council makes a disposition on the proposed ordinance from the joint committees?
Counselor Palumba?
Thank you. Um, I, I don't think, I think it's pretty obvious. I, I don't appreciate the, the comment that it wasn't on the old ordinance. It was obviously, the intention here was on the new ordinance. At the same time, I think you raised some very good points, and that, um, I would, would like to withdraw this motion, uh, at this point, uh, because we haven't passed the new noise ordinance, and it makes sense that if we, when we have a new noise ordinance that's approved by this full council, um, we can then ask for one of the departments to create educational material. So I withdraw the motion.
Okay, so he's withdrawing his motion. You withdraw the second? Whoever?
Uh, I withdraw.
Okay, so we table this item for, or we do not take this up? Counselor Palumba?
I would just, uh, wonder if, uh, if I could ask the, a town attorney for some direction on this, and I, Counsel Donato can jump in, also if, um, we sent the ordinance to the town attorney. Well, the motion that was passed only with internally was that the, um, the, the council made a motion seconded by Falcoff to present the final draft of the noise ordinance to the town law, town attorney, town lawyer, uh, and then to the council. Do, is it necessary for the committees to reconvene once we get the, uh, draft, your comments, once we get your comments, um, in order, before it goes to the full committee? Do, do we need to reconvene to accept your comments and then pass it again, um, in order for it to go to the full council for approval?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, if, if comments are made that, uh, in any way deviate from what the committee has already approved, it would go back to the committee to review those comments, uh, to determine what is going to be sent back up to the council. You may not agree with, with, uh, recommendations. Obviously, what I, what I do, and I, I am reviewing it, and I apologize, I know that we've, we've had a little bit of time, but once, once it's sent back to you, um, if there's a, if there's a change, you, I think you would want and, and need to review that, so that when you send it back to the council, it's in a full form with the, uh, imprimatur of approval of your committee.
Um, so if there are no significant changes, and, uh, can the, can we then accept it and present it to the committee, uh, to the council?
Acceptance by the committee would require a committee meeting and a committee vote.
Okay. I, I think I understand that. So once we get your comments, Counselor Donato and I will review the comments, then we will find time to, for a short meeting, to review those, and then formally submit it to the council for a vote.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business. New business A is a referral to the Committee on Public Safety for consideration of the winter overnight parking ban. I will say that, uh, this was vetted by Counselor Woodland through the two public safety entities, the police chief and the fire chief, and I will recognize Counselor Woodland if he wants to.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, both responses from the DPW and for... So both responses from the DPW and from the police department indicated this would not be something that they would be supporting. And there were some lengthy and substantive reasons as to not supporting such a referral or consideration of that policy. I'm actually bringing this proposal forward. I think it's incumbent upon me, when constituents reach out, to bring something forward, that I do so on their behalf. I will actually not be supporting this referral, even though I'm bringing it forward, because I do not agree that we should make any changes to the winter parking ban or that the committee should, this is probably like, I think this is the third or fourth time in my five terms that this would be considered and go nowhere. So I don't see there being any change or any new policy considerations that we haven't already considered in the past few years. So that's where I am.
Okay. Can I get a motion on this referral?
Reluctantly, Mr. President, I make a referral to the Committee on Public Safety for consideration of the winter overnight parking ban.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Canelas.
Thank you. Mr. President, I will not be supporting this referral. This proposal has been brought forward on numerous occasions. It has gone to town council committees. It's also been before the Traffic Commission. Fourteen months ago, a resident from George Street brought this overnight, I'm sorry, Watertown overnight parking policy before the Traffic Commission. And it was on November 28th, 2018. An excerpt from the minutes of the meeting states, "Chief Lawn reiterated that the parking policy is a controversial issue. The Traffic Commission's purpose is to advise and make recommendations. Nothing today was different from past conversations. The chief understood the challenges, but the commission was not inclined to recommend changes to the current policy. Residents may explore other avenues, but the commission was in favor of the current practice." And I will also note that according to Article 5, Section 5 of the Watertown Traffic Rules and Orders, no all-night parking is on the books for 12 months out of the year. It's only enforced November through April. And I will state, "No person shall allow, permit, or suffer any vehicle registered in his/her name other than one acting in an emergency to be parked on any street for a period of time longer than one hour between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. of any day. Signs noting this restriction are located at the following locations, and it so notes all of the locations." Personally, I'd like to see it enforced 12 months out of the year. Thank you.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add that there was a, in April of 2018, a joint referral to Public Safety and Public Works Committee, and we examined the issue of the impact on public safety vehicles during the winter with the narrowness of the roads. And the conclusion of, after input from both the police department and the fire department, as well as the DPW, the joint committees realized that the winter parking ban plays an essential role in ensuring that streets are kept clear during the winter months for the fire department and police department, as well as public works vehicles to get through. So I will not be supporting this. I think we've already taken, this question's already been asked and answered, and I see no, nothing has really changed since 2018. So I don't really see any reason to take this up again.
Counselor Baze.
I understand, but there were a lot of citizens who came forward, who signed petitions, who are concerned about this. I've been talking to a lot of citizens, and it's not just about us coming and meeting and talking about this. It's also an opportunity for us to hear from constituents on this, and I will be supporting it because I think we should take that opportunity to have those meetings, allow our constituents to talk about this, and see if there might be something that we can do to solve a problem that our constituents are having.
Any other comments? Can I get a roll call? Counselor Felton.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. President. Yeah, going high. In that, you know, I'm all for conversation and studying an issue. My problem with the narrowness, if you will, of the motion is that, from my perspective, to discuss this, we have to talk about our, it would lead to a discussion of our parking policies at a higher level in general. And so I wouldn't want to create an expectation that, you know, it's a simple solution. Yes, Chief Lawn did confirm that it's a matter of policy for the town council to give guidance. But the way things are right now, I do support an overnight ban in Watertown, parking ban. Thank you.
Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. I will be supporting the motion. I do think that Counselor Baze raised an important question. I know she has, but like she, I have received many, many emails about this parking ban and what some folks feel is an unnecessary ban, particularly when the weather is like, let's say, for the past four weeks. So I do think it's important that residents be allowed to voice their opinions about this. And maybe there could be some amendment to the parking ban that could be crafted by the counselors, by the committee, that could address some of their concerns and yet also address the concerns of the fire department and the police department. So I think a discussion could lead, we'll leave it or not, a discussion could lead to some sort of compromise. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Are there any other comments? Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a first-time counselor, I would be supporting this. It seems to be presented as an all-or-nothing winter overnight ban or not. Maybe there are other approaches, maybe limited situations. So therefore, I will be supporting this motion to refer the matter to public safety.
Any other comments before I recognize Counselor Canelas again?
Thank you. As the counselor from the East End, we are one of the most densely populated areas in Watertown. And enforcing the overnight parking ban during the winter is a way of controlling the number of vehicles that come into our community. And so many people are telling us that we shouldn't have so many cars. Well, please come to the East End, where the cars are hanging out of the driveways. Let's keep in mind that our zoning ordinance states that four unrelated individuals can occupy a residence. All right? So take into the equation all the multifamily units in the East End, and how many vehicles can actually be associated with one property? Never mind the significant others and friends that come to visit and stay or take vacations and decide to leave their vehicles in the East End. So by having this parking ban, we are in essence stating, well, this is the, this is the square footage that you have to park the vehicles, and this is all you have. It's a way of regulating how many vehicles are going to be associated with one property. And people get very creative in the winter. Front yard parking, side yard parking, grass parking, anywhere they can put it. And then we actually know how many vehicles are associated with the property. And just take a drive around the East End and see what is actually transpiring. How many emails I get from people who are turning in their neighbors and saying, "Here are the photographs. They're using front yard parking, which is not allowable in our ordinance." So it becomes neighbor against neighbor. So I think we actually have to look at this entire issue. It's not that we want to make it inconvenient. We have to be realistic about what is happening. We've become a transient area. These are no longer owner-occupied properties. We just have a couple of vehicles. These are tenants moving in and moving out. I will not be supporting this.
Any other comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gannon.
Yes, so does to support the referral?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Canelas?
No.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
No.
Counselor Woodland?
No.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
No.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
President Sideris?
No. The motion fails. Thank you. The next item is referral to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning regarding the communication from the Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee regarding transportation issues. I will say that I brought this up at the last meeting. I looked at the letter again, and I looked at what the Economic Development and Planning Committee is doing already in regards to the TMA and the shuttle. And I feel that this is just a letter that could be added just to that committee's discussion as we move forward. So if that's okay, I would like to get a motion to just add this letter to the tasks that have already been assigned to that committee.
Mr. President, make a motion that we add this letter to the existing referral at the Economic Development and Planning Committee regarding the TMA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Communications from the town manager, submission of the proposed fiscal year 2021 to '25 capital improvement program. I am requesting, and I'm suggesting this evening, that I would request a motion to delay the submission of this for one week. As all of you are aware, the manager's mother passed away on January 19th, and that put a little bit of a damper on trying to get this done. So I'd like to get a motion to defer, to allow the manager another week to get the capital improvement program submitted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Manager, do you have other communications?
Yeah, yes, just a couple of comments, Mr. President. I thank, Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for your understanding and allowing another week for the submission of the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2025 capital improvement program. But as the president just indicated, as many have been know, my mom passed away on January 19th. I wanted to take a moment to thank all of the members of our community who reached out, came to the way for the funeral mass at the end of last week. Words cannot describe my immense and appreciation as we've been blessed with our community's kindness and support in this difficult time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Request for information? Any requests? Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three requests. One, what is our current on-street residential parking availability or inventory? Two, as referenced by the town manager at our recent January 14th town council meeting, requesting information about public safety calls made to Perkins School for the Blind, including types of services and their associated costs. And I'm realizing it's not standard practice, but I was wondering if I could receive, or the council could receive, a copy of the butters list for DPW street letters, Frank and Louise Streets.
Are there any other requests for information? Announcements? Any announcements? Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. I want to make an announcement, two announcements. One, I want to appreciate the counselors who stuck with the noise ordinance, particularly these last two meetings. We really had a go at it, as you could see by how long those meetings were. And I just wanted to appreciate those counselors who took some real time and energy to go through this final, particularly the last meeting, the full draft prepared by Counselor Donato, when we went through it step by step by step. And I think it was an excellent meeting, and I want to appreciate those who were attended. I also would like to make a statement regarding Perkins. I know that Counselor, our town, that Mr. Rich says the council has no standing in this, and I appreciate that. But I do think that each of us may have our own opinion on this, and I'd like to stake my opinion. I've shared this opinion with my people on my residence, who I communicate with through email. So I want to say that I believe that the Board of Assessors should rescind the tax bill by January 31st deadline. And once that is done, that the town in Perkins should begin negotiation of a pilot that is in line with the similar pilot arrangements with other nonprofits in town and considers the many contributions Perkins has made and continues to make to the residents of Watertown. Thank you.
Counselor Baze.
Should I, let me ask a question. Is there any more comments about Perkins, or should I go get the two counselors?
No, go get the two counselors.
Okay.
Counselor Baze.
Thank you. Many of you already know that on Friday morning, there was a major fire in Watertown, and sadly, 11 families lost their homes. 12 buildings, 12 homes were actually burned. The town is deeply saddened and also trying to help everybody who has been displaced. And I won't replicate their work, but if you are interested, there are several drop-off locations for donations. All the schools in Watertown, including the school administration building at 30 Common Street and the housing authority at 55 Waverly, are accepting donations. We don't know exactly what they need yet, so please consider giving gift cards. Or if you're giving items, give like-new items or new items. Please, if you could drop off the items during business hours. And if you can give cards, it'd be very helpful for the families because they can pick out themselves what they need, since we don't know what they need. You know, I personally feel very horrible for these families. They've lost basically everything. And, but I'm very relieved, luckily, nobody was hurt. And so I'm also very appreciative for the town getting organized and finding a way to give the families what they need. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Counselor Felton.
Yes, just a quick public thank you and support from Massachusetts Municipal Associations as the annual meeting and trade show. This past Friday and Saturday, they attended and found very helpful, as usual. And also, the public's invited for open office hours, starting at 3:00 p.m. Friday, the January 31st, with our veteran service officers at the Shutt Detachment on Mount Auburn Street.
Any other announcements? Counselor Palomba.
Just to follow up on Counselor Baze, excellent request for help. I did speak to the director, Michael Lara, of the Watertown Housing Authority, and he indicated that what is really needed immediately, if possible, is beds. So if you have access to any extra beds, please, you can reach Michael Lara at Watertown Housing Authority.
Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that tomorrow night, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Tufts Health Plan, will be the Community Preservation Public Forum Number One. Thank you.
And more than 100 people have signed up to go to that meeting. I know there's a lot of meetings going on tomorrow night, so it would be very interesting to attend. There's also a school building committee meeting here tomorrow evening at 6:00. We're continuing some discussions about options for the high school. There was a forum last Tuesday evening that was very well-attended at the high school by a number of different people. The architects and the owners' project management took a lot of good notes, took a lot of information, and we've had some discussions about that, and we'll continue those discussions tomorrow evening. Two other items. The library board of trustees vacancy is closing on Friday. There are already seven people that have signed up and sent in letters of requests and resumes. We will be taking them up on February 4th. I will be with the library trustees, going through all of them. And the other very serious and critical, important item, I will continue, the town, we are looking for six members of the community to join the charter commission along with the nine town counselors. We've had very underwhelming response so far. I hate to say that. We're looking to see if we can get a broad, diverse group of six residents.
We're looking to see if we can get a broad, diverse group of six residents. So, please, don't hesitate to reach out if you know anyone. We're trying to close this on Friday. I will say that if we don't get enough additional requests, I'm going to open it up for a little bit longer because I think it's critically important that we do, we have a broad, broad view of the people that we will be, will joining the council. And one other thing on the library trustee vacancy. I did state last week that the library trustee vacancy was for four years. It is not. It is for two years. The charter says the vacancy shall be filled at the next town election, which will be in November. So, that's that. Any other announcements? Public forum. Everybody's gone.
Mr. President, as much as we talked about the victims and how much we need to help the victims and the tragic circumstances.
Counselor, if you want to make a statement like that, it's done under announcements.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So, we've already gone past that.
Okay.
I apologize, but.
Rookie mistake.
Thank you. Before we adjourn tonight, I want to have a moment of silence for Teresa Driscoll, Michael Driscoll's mother, who passed away on January 19. Please rise. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.